The show's coming in.
Coming up right now, so we can just go ahead and get started, so.
Might if I move to that side of the table?
I remember saying that this is you.
No, ma'am.
Don't get stung, you're not ready to start it yet.
No, I just print the paperwork. Yeah, I just print the paperwork and sit here.
So you're fine. Sorry, it's so messy, we got lots of donations.
Donations?
From Walmart.
Really?
For school? Post office said they didn't want it, so we said, we'll take it off.
Oh, how excellent.
We're gonna donate it to some of the churches and all the schools and.
What was your email?
I have a mail address, Grissom.
Remember?
That is awesome.
Uh, no.
You're not saying.
I don't know who he is, I'll have to pull up.
We're already recording, we're already recording.
I guess there's some.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Show me with the last name, uh, Grissom, at least nine that I don't.
Let me start?
I spent a lot of time in the meeting, but the space is awesome.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I'm just gonna sit here with my right hand.
What did you do to your hand?
I fell.
What does this have to do with policy? Are you just bringing it to my attention?
For your eyes only.
Okay.
I didn't even have a great story, I just fell.
That's a story.
You weren't still learning.
Thank you.
Just fell.
Oops.
This, the funny story, are we, we're still recording?
We are recording now, yes, ma'am.
We'll tell my funny story later.
Oopsies. Hello again.
Hey, how's the show?
It's going, I apologize for being late.
Okay, so I'm just gonna recap, um, do we wanna just go around and introduce ourselves, so?
Sure.
Everybody knows, so I, I'm Lynn Passing, I'm the Assistant Superintendent. We already introduced Michelle.
Yes, I'm Michelle Thompson, the board member.
I'm the Clerk of the Board, Rosanna Santiago.
I'm Nate Potter, I'm a parent who just signed up for the Kini.
Yay!
I'm Ramona Grissom, Trustee. School board?
Yes.
So where we left off is, um, we are on, the, the last revised was the nine-nine copy, we made some revisions, we cleaned it up and sent it out to stakeholders, Rosanna did print off for you all of the stakeholders and, um, did we get a lot of feedback, Rosanna?
There's just quite a few there.
Yeah.
So we're kinda just, we probably will spend most of the time going through some of that and then looking at the, finalizing the letter that's attached to this and then maybe putting this one to rest and then moving on to the next one.
Okay, and I, um, because in preparation for the meeting, I did review through the comments, the yellow boxes and the red boldings are mine.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows how they got on the sheet. And, and I do apologize, cause it wasn't anything intentional, it was like, I just got to go in and then I'm like, oh wait, this is going everything, this isn't just mine. So, you know, I'm still learning, cause I'm, I'm Google illiterate a lot of times. What I did find, what I did highlight were those that felt that there needed to be more clarification and it appears that, um, there's some, there, some would like more clarification on the number of days that can be missed. You know, exactly how many is that, is that for all grades, a few grades, what is it for? Um, apparently the flow on the back of the policy is, um, confusing, so I thought, well, I guess we need to clear that up as well.
The graphic is?
The graphic is what some people felt, um, and then I was a little, kinda troubled, maybe troubled's too strong of a word, by one of the parents' comments and I highlighted and read.
Okay.
Yeah. And this was the only one that felt the policy was just too stringent. Um, you know, some parents wanna keep their kids home for hunting and that's their right to keep their child home, but this one I thought was, was quite stringent and the parent didn't wanna be contacted. Did we decide who was gonna be contacting the parents that wanted to contact?
That was the question I was gonna ask in follow-up, um, I don't know, Rosanna, did we talk about that?
No.
Can I ask a question here? What is credit and what is credit denial, does that mean credit for completing the school year or?
No, credit is specific to ninth through twelfth grade credit, yeah, so high school students need a certain number of credits to graduate.
Right.
So if a child is, you know, absent fifty percent of the time in a specific class, they just wouldn't receive the class credit.
Gotcha.
It wouldn't be the credit for the whole semester or.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But they do have the ability to try to make that up, I mean, to give that, but it is something to, you know.
And so you understand, um, post, pre-COVID, um, the policy was what we were, we revised the policy that was pre-COVID. When COVID came in, um, the state implemented a, everybody has to stay home if they have COVID, so you can't penalize kids if they've got COVID or family member has COVID and the kid's missing all this time. So we were trying to go back to pre-COVID expectations, which is the child's in the classroom. If they are there to learn, they should be in the classroom.
Right.
Um, and we're trying to get away from wavering with, you know, well, maybe you can pick some online up or maybe, you know, just being really wishy-washy about the expectation of being in class.
Gotcha.
And the other important piece is, um, and I would say we had this before, but it seems it's more excessive now. We have excessive amounts of absences, like we have kindergartners missing fifty days of school. It's hard to come back from that.
Right.
And there is a clause, so I, looking at through some of the comments, this was back to, um, Trustee Grissom's point is, there is a clause that if you have, there's a, you have a 504, you have an IEP, if there is a medical issue, then it, this is kind of null and void, because like you can have a child that is, you know, broke his leg and is gonna have to have surgery and this has to be home, we're not counting that against this child, there is a, we can code that differently. This is just, I'm staying home, it's unexcused, excessive amounts of absences.
One person said that we need to clarify unexcused and excused, is there a differentiation of absences, so like if a child has excused absences, they can go beyond the nine? Or if it's only unexcused absences, then we run into the terms.
My understanding is in the old policy, that's what it was, if it's unexcused absence, absences, because if it's excused, the parent's calling it in and you might have a conversation, but the credit is specific to the unexcused. But we could, I mean.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, this attendance policy is specific for kids that are, have unexcused absences, nine in a semester?
Well, we have to determine that, but yes, we could, yep.
Okay.
But in the past, my understanding is it was specific to unexcused, because in our old policy, it actually delineated out what's excused, what isn't excused, and so that's what, that's how we did it.
What's excused, what isn't excused, to me, the excused would be the parent notification, what's unexcused is no parent notification.
And that's how it was defined in the previous policy.
Okay, okay. But in reviewing this policy, do we?
We took that part out, so we just need to define what we want that to be, I still feel like if there is a lot of absences, even if the parent's calling it in, we probably should be checking in to see if there's something that we can do to assist or support if something's going on, but.
So, I guess.
Decide if.
But then going back to the whole, you know, if a kindergartner's missing fifty percent of school because of excused absences.
Still a problem.
Okay, but then this policy doesn't have any.
Right.
Cause for enforcement.
Right.
Okay.
So that's what we have to talk about, because I'm trying to find the old one where it defined. I feel like there was one that defined the differences. So I, I mean, we can decide, are we gonna say there's excused and unexcused, or is it just all absences? And it's that first round of letter and it's a conversation, and if you know it's a chronic, then it's an automatic.
Yeah, um, I don't even know that there was a delineation of, there may have been somewhere, I'll correct that.
I feel like there was, but I could be wrong.
Unexcused, but I know one parent who did receive a letter, they were doctor's excused absences, but still got the, the letter.
Okay.
So it seems like in the past, at some point in time.
It's just been a blanket, yeah.
It was just absences, which. I guess the, the, I guess what we have to look at is, you know, what is the, um, expectation of the implementation of the policy or the, you know, modifications that we're making? And it sounds like, you know, we're trying to control coming back from COVID, because the state was very lenient and changed all the rules.
Yeah.
So now we're back, now the state's holding the district accountable for all of these things. Um, so I guess we have to determine, you know, what impact, if it truly is because there's an impact, because a student has missed too many days, then excused or unexcused is almost, is irrelevant.
Right.
Right, because they already missed.
The impact is the same.
Right, they already missed the.
Right.
The, the days, and if it's the days we're trying to gain back for the instruction hours.
But we typically don't penalize if there's like, I have a doctor's appointment and it's a chronic, like you know it's gonna be.
Right.
If you have a counseling appointment, if you have some, I mean, we don't ever, we don't typically, um, hold that against, um. And then again, if you have a chronic situation, it's, we're, we still are marking it, so we know and the, the learning loss is still there, but we're not penalizing, we're not sending out letters to those families, because it's not something that they can control.
Yeah, I, I understand some of the comments that were written and I, I get the concern, um. And, and not that I don't even disagree with it, that unfortunate thing is, is in this, in this situation of attending the public school that's governed by the state and federal law, you have to, um, participate in the regulations, there's just no way around it, um, the other thing is, is, um, you know, I, I do agree with a couple of the parents too, that I wanna make sure that, um, we aren't, uh, snuffing out our own culture of hunting and all those things also, because that has, I mean, I just, I didn't even think about that when we were going through this. And I, I know that they think maybe it's heavy-handed, but I don't know that we could write for every scenario, um, but I do understand the caution that maybe they might think that somebody would, maybe use it as, you know, abusive in their interpretation or something, I mean, I get that too, so.
One of the comments that I heard, um, and we have this at the bottom, is it tells you that like at the sixth day, that there's a letter, at the ten day, we're, we're withholding credit, but it's not, that part we took out of the narrative, and so in the top narrative where we start with the ninety percent, maybe delineating out that number. Cause it's in the graphic, but it's not in the narrative.
Oh, okay, where's the ninety percent?
Um, we took out that ninety percent, I was just, when we did it, just remember before, that was the title and then they had all of that, the numbers. So we, we jumped right into the process, but we never.
Will you do a favor and, uh, create the draft for nine twenty-one? Because I'm quick with my fingers and.
You are.
We, we don't want us to do that.
And today is twenty-one. Officially fold now. It's so sad.
Where did, um, we put the, uh, spreadsheet of the, oh, nevermind, I'll just pull up the other.
I'm linking it in right now.
Yeah, I'll just pull up the other policies.
And it's in the folder too.
Because I would think honestly, within the attendance policy, in the very first paragraph, is where we need to either talk about excused or unexcused, or like an absence is excused and, I mean, this policy is inclusive of excused and unexcused. So that there is clarification for that. And then, yeah, I did catch several of the comments, we're like, you know, we don't know when it is and where it is and. So we do need to.
A central.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there were definitely a couple that noted the IEP and 504 component.
Right.
Yeah.
Why am I not finding, oh, this is just too small for me, I need something bigger, but I can't find the.
It's not on here?
It's stakeholder input, um, is in the thirty-fifty.
This one?
Yeah, I looked for, isn't it in a spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, it's under stakeholder input.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing it on mine, all right, let me just go see if I can pull it from this.
Oh, maybe that's where I pulled it from, because mine was in my little, like, you've opened this document. I pulled it up from the green sheet.
Okay, I got it.
Initially, when I got to.
Rosanna, did you file it under the actual policy?
It's not here.
I did nothing with it.
Okay, I'm, I'll move it if you're okay with that, so that it's where it goes.
Yeah, it should be there.
I am very happy though, it seems that we're getting more and more participation.
Yes.
With the policies, which is awesome.
Yeah, well, and I feel like I've been really trying to stress, as I met with people, like, we're really spending time, like, please look at it and give feedback.
Right.
Before it's approved.
Well, so I have a question, cause we did have a response from a staff member that says middle school kids don't have credits, so it seems like there's no teeth in regard to attendance and grades. Kids mentioned this when speaking with them about these two topics, what can be done about this. Well, I would think that respectfully, they may not be getting credit, but I don't see how they can pass the class if they're not in attendance, I mean, if attendance is required and they're not there. Um, but then there was also another comment from a parent who's like, you know, if kids is a straight A student, basically doesn't even have to apply himself and can miss fifty percent and still get an A, even though he's missed all these assignments, which I don't understand how that can happen.
They must have signed up to get an A.
Exactly. So I, I don't understand how that can happen, other than the fact that the teacher's saying, here, you can just make these assignments up, you're not gonna be, uh, it's not, they're not gonna be deficient, because even though you weren't here and you're getting all this extra time that nobody else got, um, I, I, there has to be some.
I mean, I don't see how you could not be in school and get an A, but I could see how you could miss a lot and get a C, because the way it's weighted, your test could be weighted higher, but if, if, if the learning is happening and the kid is getting it and doesn't need to do the homework.
Right.
Because they're, they get it and they can pass the test, then they've learned the material.
So then there is no consequence.
Right, if, if, I mean, those are really, that doesn't happen very often.
Right.
Um, but there are those scenarios where there are really bright kids who, and in all fairness, I mean, you probably, probably not the right placement of a class either.
I would agree with that.
I mean, so that's where when you, if you, I would think if, as a middle school principal, if you have a kid that is able to do that and is literally missing significant amounts and passing, then you probably would need to be looking at advanced placement. Because we should be challenging all kids.
We should be.
Right. But it's because there are some middle school classes that there aren't credit attached to it, you know?
Right, but there are grades attached to the class, so in a sense, a lack of credit to me also equates to an F. I mean, because if you fail the class, you fail the class. Now, how that impacts the student's academic career, I don't know, but it should be something where the parents are also concerned about the fact that my child's gonna get an F if, if I don't get them to school, I mean.
And you can't advance to the next coursework, because it should be a progression.
Right.
Right, cause it's increasing in rigor and, yeah.
Right. And we're, we're, we're getting away with just moving them on, we're, we're not doing that anymore, so, um.
One, well, you, I mean, we, those, the principals are signing off that they can, they have passed.
Right.
They are competent, they're, I mean, this, this just comes down to competency and like all of my degrees, I had to have a competency measure.
Oh, exactly.
You know, so.
Yes, I do.
It's not just a matter of being able to say I passed a class, it's to be able to show competency in various subject matter.
Right.
Didn't we have the number of days in here at one time, did we take it out?
Maybe.
I mean, we have.
Oh, no, we, uh, ten days at notice, ten days, ten days, okay.
What page are you reading, which one?
Number two, page two. Oh.
I just think in the very, the first one that we did in this was, you know, we talked about that whole you have to have forty-six credits and then sixty-five percent mastery.
Right.
And then we started in, uh, you have the six and you have the ten, and so we, we did a narrative of that graphic and we ended up crossing out that narrative.
Yeah, I thought we had the days and there's somewhere the ninety percent or whatever that number was.
If you pull up, um.
Okay. So we need to put something back in there for that, so it is, I guess, more clear.
Yeah, on the nine-two dra, yeah, the nine-two draft, there's a ninety percent attendance paragraph that was completely lined out, but it does talk about nine days within there, and we did try to kind of, um, pair out in sort of a bullet format. For simplification.
Yeah.
So we can add either that language back in or, you know, however we want to add it back in.
So you have it right there, but then you also, so scroll down a little, is this the nine-two?
It was on page three. What are you looking for?
Oh, mine just looks different. Cause see, for me, it's in this red, but I'm not seeing the red on there.
Well, see, mine's in blue, are you on the nine-two?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah, mine says nine point two, point two, two.
Keep going up, Rosanna.
Right there's the ninety percent.
Keep going up, Rosanna. Oh, keep going, that's where I'm, we're on the wrong part, go up, see, right there.
Okay.
It says the same thing, so that's, I think we crossed it out, because it's redundant, it's found in both.
Okay.
Cause it almost says the same thing there, and it's almost, it's, you have been what the blue says as well, a little bit lower.
Well, stating the expectation for graduation, I don't think is the exact same thing as saying, if you miss nine days, you're gonna lose your credit. So maybe we do need to put that, um. Because below that, on page one of the nine-two, it does state, a student will be allowed ten absences per class, per semester, and the absence beyond that number may mean a loss of credit. And then below that, on page three, we talk about ninety percent, which is like, okay, which is it?
Yeah, and that was the nine-day.
Right.
Right.
Policy, which is what I think it was before COVID, it was nine days.
Yeah, this was, this was the policy that was in effect before COVID, yeah.
That's what I thought, okay.
So, are we okay if I go ahead and copy and paste this red paragraph? Just toss it on to the other.
Sure, we'll see what it looks like, yeah.
Cause I'm gonna copy it with the, the crossouts too. Cause I would think it should go up here.
It should stay relevant, right there.
Yeah. As should the nine and ten days, where's that, on page three? I'll take this and just.
Rosanna, can you make it just a little bit bigger, like a hundred and twenty-five or so? Yeah, that'd be great, there we go, thank you. So the, do we need, do we even need the red one at the top, the, Michelle, the darker red that you just copied in there?
I don't know, I just moved it over there in margins or driving cruise, so. Little things I gotta fix, I gotta. Imagine that. Okay. Um, well, the benefit of the darker red is we're telling kids what they need to graduate. So I think if we're, I think.
We already have a policy that does that, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, if we're trying to answer the question or the recommendation that we just list how many days or how many absences, whatever the comment was, um. So one person, Jason said it was ten.
Well, the scroll delio bob thing.
Low charge.
Yeah, that's it, ten days of absence, we send a letter.
Yeah, of withheld, that's, so on the tenth day.
The letter goes out.
Yeah, and, and your credit is being withheld.
Correct.
So there's nine days, okay, yeah, so missing more than nine per, um, semester. Yep, so the admin.
Okay, so if we take the dark red out.
And you can just say when class is in session, if we're gonna leave that in there. Instead of saying when that class is in session, well.
Do we need to stay in each classroom, I mean?
I don't think so, I mean, ninety percent, when class is in session, so whether you're middle school, high school, elementary school, I mean, wherever you're at.
And just so you understand, in case you wanna keep coming back to these, which we do have to keep having you, we found that a lot of the policies are roof fluff and la 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 in the very beginning, so we're trying to pare it down to where it's like, here's the policy and this is what you need to know of this policy, instead of, cause a lot of them are like, the board of trustees really feels, you know, it's just like, we don't need to say all that. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Yes, so.
The other thing we found is there's a lot of cross referencing, which meant that then.
Right, it's not self-contained.
And it's not, and you don't get to the five other that are layered deep in there, and so then it conflicts with each other. And so we're really trying to just make it a standalone as much as possible. And we might reference, like, please see this policy, but we're not gonna go into detail about what that policy is, so that it can be truly a standalone.
Sounds good.
We're just trying to simplify life.
So at the beginning here, the term unexcused is used, but it's not really defined. I know you guys kinda hit on that before. Are you planning on defining it in this meeting or?
We should. Um, but I do wanna point out that in this first little blue paragraph, it does state that um the administration shall adjudicate absences where the total number of days is brought below nine days through doctor's excuses and legitimate illness. What are we saying?
Well, what my interpretation is or what, I mean, I'm, I feel like you're basically saying that we're only targeting excused or unexcused.
Excused absences.
So is that most of things, a list of permissible excuses? Is that our list of?
I mean, typically, it's not a list of excuse, it's if you get a hold of the parent and the parent excuses it.
Okay.
I mean, but to um trustee Grissom's point, an absent is an absent, the im- the impact at of the educational level is the impact.
Right, it doesn't change, excuse versus not.
And I mean, if I'm being super transparent, there's a, a lot of people excuse absences for a lot of reasons. And if that's the, that if that's the workaround, that's the workaround, and so we're, we're gonna be right back in the same boat, in my opinion.
Well, it will be, but giving credit to what Ramona brought up, I mean, what about hunting?
Right.
Is that excused and okay and agreeable? Because.
It's our culture.
It is our culture. However, I mean, you've got hunting season that spans, I mean.
Oh, yeah, you got.
It's not just two weeks in November, I mean, it.
Be black powder, could be.
Yeah, exactly. There is. And you don't have to do just this region, you could be traveling all about the country. And I did find it interesting that there were a few parents, and maybe it is a culture we need to start acknowledging. But there's a lot of people that travel and take their family with them. For employment, I mean, the, I I don't miss, and I'm reading into that because they didn't specifically state that, but because employment has become more, uh, what's the word?
Work from homey?
Yes. Yes.
It's more transient.
Yes, so. But my struggle with that is, if your child's not gonna be here, please consider homeschooling. You know, because there's excellent curriculums out there that parents can take with their kids if they're going to be missing that much.
Yep, that was sort of to my point, is that if in in reading through some of these comments, it's like, well, you chose a public education, and a public education is, has to comply with state and federal law.
Correct.
We can't we can't change those rules, and we're bound and governed by those rules.
Correct.
You know, um now the hunting piece or or those things that are uh, you know, so many people do, I mean, I would think that there would be, and I know in times past that this has happened, that there would be some kind of interaction with teachers or whatever, and they, kids would have the, the work to do or did or
Right.
whatever, there would be some.
There's some concession to, right.
Yeah, so, um.
Like, we've had a family a couple times, I remember when I was at Betty Kiefer, that um the family would travel, and they'd go to Europe, and they'd go for a month, and it would be the whole family, and so in one instant, they, that's what they just disenrolled, but we gave them all the work and, I mean, they, they did everything and did their own stuff, and they were learning history, I mean, it was a great experience, and then they just came back and not a big deal. Um, there was a situation where um the parent wanted to like once a week do a Google Meet kind of thing, and everything was through Google Classroom, so it was just like, I mean, you just you help the parent with wherever that is.
Right.
Um, my my experience with hunting is it's never been a significant duration of time, it's one or two days here and there. You know, I mean, it might be for the, the parents, but from the kid's standpoint, I haven't had an experience where there's kids gone for weeks.
Well, and, but I do know, you know, people set up their hunting camp.
Yeah.
Kids are there for, you know, they're there for hunting, and you know, if we score big in the beginning, it's not that long. If we have to go the full two weeks or whatever.
Right.
And for some people, that is their, that's their.
But what I also don't, it is, and I'm not anti-hunting at all. But I don't like the thought of, well, if we're gonna make an exception for hunting, then we open the door for everyone to start petitioning, well, make this exception, make that exception, and it's like.
I mean, some, you're gonna have to draw the line at some point.
Well, and I think, I don't know of any administrator that's not approachable and able to work with the families that are involved in unique situations. So, I mean, I, I was disheartened that people were like, oh, this is like, so bad, and it's like.
They've never, to begin with, we now are putting all of this in front of them.
Right.
They obviously.
Didn't know it existed before.
Either are new or never, because it was never in front of them, and they just went about life and never a problem with school and.
Right.
You know, they, but now we're saying, hey, look at this, you know, they're like, oh my gosh. What are you people doing? It's like, no, really, it really was already there.
Right, well, yeah.
I mean, you, we haven't, we've just cleaned it up, we really haven't made significant, like, one eighty degree turnabout, it's just cleaning it up. And I'm, and actually enforcing.
Right. I wanna take this. Okay, so I think that the, the whole when a student's absent needs to be the, in a sense, the closing paragraph. Instead of just up there, any opinions on that? Just for the flow of the paragraph.
Uh, which, which?
The very first paragraph, right there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what illegitimate illness is.
Oh, wait, that was supposed to come out. Thank you.
Uh, that wasn't it.
So is there a so-called illegitimate?
Yeah.
Or does it mean to say, you know, child has a splinter, couldn't go to school because he had a splinter, as opposed to, you're actually sick?
We excuse students in secondary school from registering for six classes?
I don't think so.
Have we, we've never done that. Why would we?
I don't know. It's up there in the, where we were. Yeah. Oh, the only thing I can think of is maybe a senior.
If it's a dual credit situation and you're attending classes at either um K Tech or at uh NIC.
Right, and then do we ever have an instance where maybe a senior only needs one or two classes to graduate, like, they don't have to have all six classes or?
I mean, that happens, but I feel like they fill their time, but I can, I can reach out to one of them and ask.
Are suspended days excused? Is that what that's talking about?
That's the correlation of, is that double jeopardy if you've suspended a kid and then you count against him, so now you're talking about credit withholdal. Lisa's comment was, it feels a little double jeopardy.
I just don't know why we would re, if they weren't lacking the credit and they met everything, why we would require them to be in school a full, you know, a senior, I'm thinking, you know, um. All those, all those classes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's amusing. Must be something in the, in the air, I mean, it doesn't like. The other thing that came with the um the doctor's note, also they said, what about school activities? But isn't that a given, or do we have to write that in the policy?
I'm sorry.
Well, you're coming. Um, one of the comments was, not only, you know, what about a student with a doctor's note, but also students who miss for school activities, but isn't that a given? I mean, they, that's not.
Right, if you have to leave because you have a, you know, you're a gay at Moscow, we don't, that's, that isn't.
You're still in school.
Right, you know.
Right, you are still in school. Well, in reading policy thirty thirty, there's, when, as I'm understanding it, yeah, because policy thirty thirty, when a student is uh dual enrolled, they're now a non-public student.
Right.
The student. So, the attendance uh policy doesn't apply to them. I mean, the students in secondary school shall be required to register for a minimum of six classes each day, which may include one scheduled supervised study hall, unless dual enrolled under policy thirty thirty, part-time attendance uh slash dual enrollment. Period. Because that's, that policy thirty thirty is pretty specific to. You know.
Do we need to link that policy in?
Is it down here? Is it under?
We normally know if it's in the narrative, we link in the actual one, that's what we've been doing.
Right, 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 um, but we should also have a cross-reference, yeah, it's not down here.
I'm gonna link it in if you wanna add it.
Okay. And thirty thirty hasn't been reviewed since oh seven, just so you know.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's the other thing, several of these policies made haven't been reviewed in a really long time, and so we, we started this green doc with the hopes that we could start, like, cross-referencing everything in kind of delineation from the original. But there's a lot of policies that just, so we're just trying to slowly work through them as fast as we can.
Sounds good.
Oh, what else? Okay, so. Okay, I'm gonna head and wave the flow chart, the title flow chart slash all students. Um, because that was, you know, they're like, it needs to be delineated, however, I do think down in um, sixth day of absence, send a warning letter.
Hey. We're in policy right now, and part of the attendance policy, it says, um, we read the exact verbiage to you. Uh, students in secondary school shall be required to register for a minimum. Uh, students in secondary school shall be required to register for a minimum of six classes each day, which may include one scheduled supervised study hall unless dual enrolled. Is there ever a scenario with a senior where they meet at all their credits and they don't have to be there full-time? But that's excluding like dual credit and K tech. There are some kids where if they're done with everything, they don't have to be enrolled for the. Right, right, right. It says six classes. Okay. But you do have seniors that are not connected that have a half-day situation because they're all they've mastered all their credits. Yeah. Right. Okay, and so then they just leave when they're done? Okay. Right, yep. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Bye. So, we said if like there was a dual credit situation where you have a senior that's attending full-time at N I C, it wouldn't be six classes, it would be three or four.
Yep.
Um, and this doesn't say credits, it says classes, but he said there's always one or two seniors that are completely done, and so they leave after, you know, when their stuff is done, because they're not at N I C, they're not, they're just waiting to graduate. They're, you know, so. And they don't just, they don't wanna take filler classes.
Sure, yeah, there's no need for it, yeah.
Right.
Um, we probably need to do something with that sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So I guess we still need the order statement, though we need some other kind of order statement in there for that or, um. Now it happened to building principals, the one who would decide that, right? At the high schools for the for the seniors.
With parents, that's part of their plan, they're kind of, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
A lot of kids, I mean, he said very few do it only because more often than not, you know, they wanna be they they're playing sports, they wanna do all the activities, and so
Right, right.
it doesn't happen very often. He said sometimes it's just one.
Yeah, no, I get, yeah, I get down.
Yeah.
Um, we just should put something in there. Where what are you working on, Michelle, or what are you reading?
I am playing on the, um, the.
The flow chart?
Thank you. The thing.
Yes.
Flow chart.
Um.
But I can.
Oh, you're fine. I just need to change to put that in or it says, um, the the uh the strikeout that we said about the uh credits or they have to be enrolled in six, a minimum of six classes each day, but that's not necessarily true for all, you know, students, especially seniors.
Okay, so students shall be required.
So should we just leave the or excuse by the local board or should we put, um? Your brain just a little blank.
What if we just say students in secondary school shall be required to register for classes each day?
There you go.
I mean, they need to register for their classes, that's the reality. Where they're at and what they are is specific to the student.
There you go, yeah, that'll work.
Shall be required to register for their classes. Okay, so students in secondary school shall be required to register for their classes, which may include one scheduled supervised study hall unless, uh, the student is dual enrolled.
Well, that actually that doesn't even apply now. It's sort of irrelevant now.
Okay.
To have the dual enrollment.
Okay.
I think the the explanation of the dual enrollment was just because there was a minimum requirement of six classes a day.
Okay, so students in secondary schools shall be required to register for their classes. Do the do the middle school students, are those um school-directed for what they're assigned to, or do they get to pick their classes?
I mean, there's requirements they have to choose, but they do get to pick.
Okay, perfect.
Some of their electives. I remember um putting like a specific because I think it's Timberlake has seven classes, remember L.A. Middle School has six, so.
Right. Right.
Because they just pulled the time apart, so.
Okay. But saying students in secondary schools were including the middle schools with that, so that there's no.
Yeah, they get to have some flexibility with that for sure.
All right, perfect. What, okay, on the flow chart, Lynn, we have uh develop contract plan for re contract slash plan for reinstating credits or remedying the situation. See notes. What notes are we referring to?
Uh, no idea. No notes. So, and typically it's not, it's really just a parent meeting and we're trying to brainstorm a plan to help and you know, there we never had like formalized, it was just we met as a team to brainstorm what we could do.
All right, so. I don't know why this is there. There we go. What are you talking about?
The graphic.
Well, but we've gotta take out stuff.
Yeah, you're right. And when it when it's all said and done, we probably will, but.
And I would just move it to its own page.
Yeah.
Seriously, because it's.
It looks spooky right now.
You want something to drink? You want some waters?
Okay, I actually drank one right here. Just prepared for a drink.
Yeah.
Well, we we were we said till five to seven, we're gonna try to honor that.
I thought it was five to eight, honestly.
Oh.
So I'm good too.
So, um, so what I did on the flow chart is kind of cleaned up its presentation. Um, send let on sixth day of absence, send warning letter, that's for all students.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, tenth day of absence, send letter withholding credit. Um, and send petition for ninth through twelfth.
Maybe I have to work through it there.
My box isn't big enough, I'm just. Um, okay, so let me go here.
Can you make the box bigger?
I can.
We have the technology.
We do. This is a matter of how upset you get with the technology and the process.
So, that seems to make more sense to me, but I don't know if it's clear to every parent. Tenth day of absence, send letter, oh, you don't see it, sorry. Tenth day of absence, send letter withholding credit, send petition, that's for ninth through twelfth grade. Is that accurate?
So sending letter withholding credit and sending petition is both for ninth through twelfth grade?
Correct. Because.
Maybe put for ninth through twelfth grade before send letter withholding credit and send petition. Like right now, it looks like send letter withholding credit may apply to other grades. Send petition for ninth through twelfth grade.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
And I would just say if we're gonna say ninth through twelfth grade here, then.
Okay, so for ninth through twelfth grade, tenth day of absence, send letter withholding credit, send petition. And then is it redundant? I think I can do withhold credit without having to identify ninth through twelfth grade.
Hey, that's good.
Okay.
Then on the next one, you just say credit reinstated and take out the ninth through twelfth grade? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now. Yeah, cuz I'm like, huh, that looks a little cheesy. Where's my, there was a thing. Where'd it go? Oh, here. That looks like it's much smaller font.
It does to me.
Well, I think your for the ninth through twelfth grade font looks bigger than all of them.
Yeah, it does.
It's cuz it's bolded, but maybe.
Yeah, the whole box looks bigger.
Nobody, even the whole box looks bigger.
It looks stretched vertically.
It says it's Calibri eleven. So I don't know. I have no idea. I do not have the file. Okay, so then.
Oh, I was working on it.
What's she working on?
It says she's in there, I didn't wanna mess with it.
Yeah, it is stretched, it's stretching the text.
Okay. Can you fix it? Some of us are not as competent as you. And then the only other thing. There needs to be, someone needs to put a little drawing box and make that little arrow thing like up above. I don't know how to do that.
Do what?
Put an arrow here?
Yeah, because someone drew a line in there, but it doesn't work right, so.
Like right here, you wanna narrow?
No. See where it says contract fulfilled?
Oh, here, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Hmm, that's funny.
Okay.
Oh, that's not cute.
What's going on right here?
Lynn, yeah, I was gonna say, can you just delete that and then just do an arrow? Your brain.
No, I didn't get there.
There you go.
Okay, well, making this look appropriate. Um, Rosanna, do you think you could make it look appropriate?
Oh, God, I knew you were gonna say that. Um, I can try.
Okay, just cuz I don't wanna get wrapped up in the minutia of making this.
What do you need, what else do you need right now?
Well, it needs to look uniform.
This, yes, these.
I mean, you know, I'm.
Yeah, the box is all.
Or, I mean, in Ramona's spare time, because we know she has ample spare time, she could make it look lovely. But that being said, I just don't wanna get caught up in this. If we think we have accomplished adding language in to make it clearer, um.
So are you telling me you think that we are good with this policy?
I am.
Uh, no.
No, we're not.
Excessive, the word excessive, which excessive in this context would mean.
The ten absences.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got excessive twice. All right, so.
It's under the K five.
Right, and then it's in the first paragraph after the four students, okay.
I'm just trying to make sure that we hit all of, um,
Well, then I don't know necessarily that it's excessive, wouldn't it just be absenteeism?
Yeah, well, there, we'll go back up to it.
And the intent is to not put a number on it for K through five?
Well, K through five, it's the same. It's ten. I mean, nine to ten, yeah.
They're gonna get a letter at that point, yeah.
Yeah, at six, everyone gets a letter.
At six, everyone gets a letter? At ten, it's you lose credit for the class or whatever?
Right. The disadvantage is is that there is no credit in middle school or elementary.
Right.
So, we don't necessarily identify the consequence of the tenth absence.
Well, sometimes it could be.
So is there a consequence for the tenth absence?
That's the million-dollar question.
I mean, what we talked about is that when it starts to become excessive and there's just a, you know, a blatant, then it's coming to the board, and then the board's making that determination if we're gonna look at truancy or.
Yeah, because I do believe when we get down to um, truancy, you know, three or more violations of the attendance policy, well, the policy would be, um, you know, triple times, so they would be at thirty. You know, three or more violations of the attendance policy, well, the policy would be, um, you know, triple times, so they would be at thirty. Or actually, technically, it could be twenty-seven absences when they're brought before the board.
Yeah.
So, you know, and.
And at the elementary, the middle school level, there's, um, a administrative manual, wasn't that where it was, or the, whatever the teachers that they use.
Yep.
Where they get, contact the parent and they try and work out a plan, you know, find out what's going on.
And we do that at every level, just trying to figure out, I mean, there's some circumstances where it's out of the control and it can be a custodial issue, I mean, so then you're working with them, it's not. You're not taking those kids, bringing those kids to the board, we're still tracking the attendance, but we're trying to work with the family and figure it out, you know, is. And that's where some of our five reports have come from, because like, they're still trying to figure out an illness, but they don't know what it is, but they're having lots of doctor visits, and so then you're accommodating the family, what can we do, we're not. Penalizing that family like, as they're going.
Right.
Through whatever struggle. I think you could just see, say absenteeism, 'cause that in and of itself delineates that it's, it's an issue.
Okay.
But, that would be.
What do you think, Emma?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine with me, the, the, um, the parents' question was, what is that, you know, excessive could be, but according to the policy, the excessive would be.
Right.
Ten absences.
Yeah. But that's fine, we can just use the absentees in those spots.
We can just erase it because that's its language we added. Student and the parent, guardian or custodian, why is there so much space there? Send a warning and writing of impending loss of credit. Then we need to reword this paragraph, 'cause it is specific to just ninth through twelfth grade.
Which, which one is that?
The very first paragraph after, which it kind of is, but yet it isn't.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
Yeah, because everyone gets a warning letter at six.
So it probably should go either in every single. As a bullet point.
But the paragraph is specific to loss of credit. So, um, and nowhere do we say that we're also gonna send them the petition.
Other than on our dropdown.
Correct, no, the flow chart.
Yeah, it just says they may file a petition.
That reminds me, in my mind, a dropdown.
Not worry, I get it, I get it, okay, what was that, remember?
But it's technically a flow chart.
I would say it just says that they may file a petition. Or a petition shall be filed with the principal or.
Right, do we have a form though for that? Do we have a form petition?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, then what are we mailing them?
We typically do the letter. We have that letter and that, that's what we need to bring up right after this, it's directly underneath, it's right here on our deal, so, and we've made some adjustments to it, 'cause remember, we didn't like the language, so we need to look at that.
Right.
And then, I would imagine the petition is, is they're drafting an email, and then there's a meeting that's happening, but to my knowledge, there's not a set form, but I can follow up and ask that question.
Okay.
And see if there's a specific, specific form.
Okay, well, because if, if the flow chart's saying we're sending them a petition, 'cause that's why I delineated it out that way, because it said petition. But if we don't have a petition, you know, and we're allowing just an email request to like, hey, my kid needs his credit.
Let me verify that, 'cause there, my, what I think probably happens is they each have their own form.
Oh.
Right, so that's what I wanna find out, is, is there a universal one, or do they each have their own?
Okay.
But while you guys are waiting, do you wanna look at, uh, that letter and see if there's any changes we wanna do to that? 'Cause we'll bring both of these together.
Yeah, where's the letter?
Hey, sorry for blocking you, um.
Do we not print the letter out?
Um, the petition, is there a form you guys use that when you send a petition to parents? I know about the letter, but what, is there, is there, is the letter encompassing the petition, or is there a separate petition, 'cause in the flow chart. It says that we send a letter withholding credit and then we send a petition.
Letter one.
Do you want me to call him? Okay, do you know if you and Lakeland use the same form?
I know we do, I know there is a form, I know we both use it.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, I'll have somebody send it to me. Right, right.
Okay, so there's two letters in the folder for policy thirty fifty. There's a truancy letter, and then there's an elementary truancy letter.
Okay, I'll call Josh too, please. Yeah, we had to change the language, so it was, 'cause the first, I mean, a long time ago when it was written, pretty sure, um, and it was rough.
Okay. So then, okay.
Yeah, he said that there is a form that they both use, but he doesn't do it, so I'm gonna see if Josh can send it to us, like, Josh does it, he's in charge of it.
Okay.
So, he's like, I haven't looked at that form in a while, so.
Um, so it looks like Coeur d'Alene School District got their policy. From someplace other than ISBA, and it's actually the absences and excuses procedures, um.
Hey, do you have, um, when you guys petition for credit for a family, you're sending the form to them?
Because it lays out elementary K through eight, and then nine through twelve.
Do you and Lakeland use the same form?
Um, and it's still the same thing, ten or more absences.
Do you have it on your phone, can you send me a copy of that?
Oh, they go directly to the board for determination of habitual truancy.
Okay, okay. Well, if and when you find it, can you send it to me? Thank you, my dear, okay, bye. There is a form that exists in Never Never Land, but they haven't used it for a while, because it never was done, so it's been a while. So he said, I need, they're both at games, and so when they get to a computer, they'll try to find it and send it our way.
Okay. Yeah, ISBA doesn't look to have any form or draft for that.
Does Coeur d'Alene have a petition?
Um, no, I haven't, I don't know, said no before, I, um, I went there to pull up some of their.
Oh, I lied. Thirty forty.
Yeah, that's what Coeur d'Alene has too, is thirty forty.
Well, thirty forty is compulsory attendance, and then with the compulsory attendance, um, there's a letter for the prosecutor.
Are you looking at our policy?
Nope, I'm looking at ISBA.
Okay.
There's a school truancy referral form.
Yeah, that's everything Coeur d'Alene has.
And then referring school information. So, do we, do we have thirty forty on our little page?
Yes.
We do. I hate to ask this, but when was the last time it was looked at?
Let's see.
I'll tell you right now.
I wanna say two thousand and seven.
Yep, you're right.
Is that true?
'Cause I printed it for that, uh, yeah, situation.
Yep, so, uh, Coeur d'Alene School District has all of that implemented as of two thousand and fourteen, um, and that's probably why. Yeah, the layout is actually quite nice.
Well, and this was updated in, um, twenty ten.
They have an activities or pre-planned absences, a couple of paragraphs, um.
And is it, uh, policy thirty fifty or thirty forty?
Forty, yeah, thirty forty. So let's see, does ours have? I don't think ours has that, 'cause I looked, just pulled it up.
Yeah, it's pretty short and sweet, huh?
Yeah, yeah, in comparison to, uh, Coeur d'Alene has the, uh.
The filing information is nice too.
Yeah, now, Coeur d'Alene's got theirs from.
Well, the ISBA's compulsory attendance policy is one page.
It's all the forms that are nice.
But it has the forms, yeah.
Oh, that's why.
But then they have all the, you know, versions of the attend, they have four alternate, uh, attendance policies.
Who does, Coeur d'Alene?
No, ISBA.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, all of Coeur d'Alene's forms, I don't know if they came from ISBA or not, but they're, um, actually an education lawyer here in Idaho created them.
Our ISBA has the same, um, numbers, thirty forty, F two, F one.
Oh, do they, okay, yep.
Mm-hmm.
She probably worked for them at one time, or worked with them at one time.
And interesting, they never, they, I mean, it doesn't matter, but they don't even have a thirty fifty.
Who doesn't?
Coeur d'Alene.
Oh.
They just have the thirty forty.
They just compiled it, just look at, they have the thirty forty P, which is the attendance procedures. But they are doing compulsory all in one, where in ISBA, it's separated.
Yep.
Okay. I find this interesting in their policy. Compulsory attendance, this is ISBA. It states, "The parent or guardian of any child who has attained the age of seven years, but not the age of sixteen years, shall cause that child to be instructed in subjects commonly and usually taught in the public schools. Unless the child is otherwise comparatively instructed, the parent or guardian shall cause the child to attend public, private, or parochial school for a period. Each year equal to that during which the public schools are in session." Attendance. Parents or guardians are required to have their children ages seven through sixteen enrolled in attending a public, private, or parochial school.
Yeah, no. Yep. That's really have to read every word.
So what do we wanna do?
Uh, so did we got, we got the excessive, uh, absences remedied, right, so it's just the form that we need to figure out.
So then, do we download, um, have Rosanna download the forms from ISBA, and then we try to tweak that, and then we have. A slew of forms, including attendance letter, and so it's attendance letter, you know, form one.
No. No, because those are for thirty forty, but we need the letter that they're sending for the petition.
Yeah, we're.
And I think that's it, right, is that the last thing, what else were people bringing up?
Well, we, we need, there's two things, we need the petition, but we also, there's a letter that, then that sixth day, that ten day, so it's kind of separate.
I thought we went through those, though, um.
I, I just wanted you guys to look at it one more time and see if we're good with that. We have looked at it.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we tweaked it in, um.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Um, but wait, it's just been a while, so I wanted us to look at it one more time.
I like the, um, I don't mind this compulsory attendance, because I do think we need to have that. Parents need to understand what they can do with their kids. I would like to tweak the language, I don't think it would take much, because I don't agree that, you know, they have to be enrolled in public, private, or parochial, they need to be instructed, like.
Right.
The law says. Um, I do think that, um. Because, and, and the reason why I think that that needs to be there is I don't think parents understand why, under the law, we are obligated to report them when the kiddos don't come to school. That needs to be there, just for education purposes. Um, I do like their little letter that would go to the prosecutor, uh, for truancy, and then I do like the truancy referral form, because it's just, it's pretty simple. And then it talks about valid excuses, not a valid excuse, um, and the referring to school information. And I apologize, 'cause you're not even able to look at this.
That's fine.
But just so you know, we do have, our compulsory attendance says the same thing about the seven to sixteen, we have that, it's just that one page.
Right, which, um.
They just have more.
So, thirty forty, when we look at thirty forty, we should keep the forms with thirty forty, right, and not add them to thirty fifty.
Correct.
Okay.
But, so, so, oh, God.
No, I was just gonna say, although, I think with respect to the whole truancy component, that is actually of the attendance policy, which is thirty fifty. Not the compulsory attendance.
Right.
The letter to the prosecutors with the compulsory attendance, so I think it could be, you know. They could go to both, but I think they just need to be there so parents can see, this is what you're gonna get.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I agree, um, and then we could always come back, uh. Because it would just be an admin thing, and we could also tell the board that, um, once we update thirty forty, then we would just come back to thirty fifty and put a little reference line.
Okay.
To whatever those forms are, whatever they're gonna.
Bring, 'cause the forms will come before the board is.
Yeah, yeah, so that way we don't have to, um.
So can I ask a clarifying question?
No.
Okay, so, we will bring, are you asking, Rosanna?
I stepped out.
We're gonna do, uh, add to this, so the next time we meet, we're gonna look at thirty forty, just because it's all goes in it, we can bring it all at the same time to the October board, meaning that would be ideal.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yes, okay, and so.
I mean, that would be my vote, I don't know what any of the else thinks, but they all sort of go hand in hand, I think it would be.
And then, are we pulling it from ISBA, or are we pulling Coeur d'Alene's?
Uh, well, I think we'll pull, uh, yeah, both of them, and we can look at ISBA's, they might be the same.
Both? Okay, they might be the same, okay. Okay, so for this policy, we are feeling like the actual policy thirty fifty is good to go, we're gonna just look at letters and kind of do that, and then. We're gonna lay this to rest for attendance for thirty fifty, or is there more we need to do? I took notes, Rosanna, we're good. You're good, we were copying.
Forgive me.
What?
You said, are we good?
Yeah.
So, on policy thirty fifty, yes, I do believe we are good.
Okay.
And you, these, all these letters, is what you want to go to the board?
With thirty forty, when we come back, next time, we'll tackle thirty forty, so we can put thirty forty with its forms and thirty fifty, 'cause they're related all to the board.
Right, right, okay.
Yep.
Sure, so we'll look at these, so.
So are all these letters applicable to the attendance policy, we've got letter two, letter one, letter three, letter A, letter B.
Right, but I thought we shortened it and just did this one.
Okay.
That's what I thought we did.
I don't know what all these are then.
Those are the old ones, those are from Lisa, and then I thought we just changed this one, and we just said the same letter's gonna go out, we're not gonna have it have. You know, degree, varying degrees of severity, it's just, this is the letter. And then, I also need to get a copy of the petition for this one, for thirty fifty.
Okay, then, the only change that needs to be done to this letter is it's not nine absences, it's six, according to our policy. So.
Can I change that then?
Yes, ma'am.
And I can just change it in the red, because we added that?
Yep.
Yeah, sixth day of absence, send a warning letter.
Six.
Who? Wait, am I on that? Oh, no, not, nevermind, just ignore me, you're good.
So am I gonna say, our attendance records indicate that student name has exceeded, this is what the letter says, our attendance records indicate the student name has exceeded six absences this semester, and that's all I'm changing.
Absences. Yep.
So then this letter, the letter is done, so all I need to do for this thirty fifty is get that, a copy of that petition.
Yep.
If we can find it.
Well, it sounds like we need a second letter, because for ninth through twelfth grade, on the tenth day of absence, we send a letter withholding credit. We need that letter.
I think it's part of the petition, but I'll ask.
Okay. Yeah, and if it is, that would be great, because.
So ten absences, um, and letter, are these one and the same?
Yeah, and petition.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe that's why they go together, because they are the same, you know.
That could be.
So, and then Rosanna, you and I will pull thirty forty,
Mm-hmm.
um, and look at revisions, and we'll pull ISBA's and Cordillane's, and try to start merging those with our new, and then we'll bring that to our next.
Boarding, or policy meeting.
The third week of.
October fifth.
Yeah, not next week, but the week after that.
Yeah, yeah, good, good call.
It's okay, the meeting, I'm like, the second and fourth Wednesdays.
Okay.
Totally over.
You guys.
Okay.
Attendance might be done, yeah.
That would be.
So, I have one more comment on it?
Sure.
Not to.
Please.
Right on the celebration. So typically, when you have a flow chart, uh, you either duplicate it in text or reference it in text. Like if I'm a parent reading this, and I have a student in K through five, I'll read these three bullet points and be like, done. But the real part that I should actually be concerned about is in the flow chart, where if my student misses six days, now I get a letter, I'm like, why, why is it not in here? So I think some are in here, there should be a reference to the flow chart.
Say, please see flow chart at the bottom.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Um, yeah, reference it or duplicate it in the text.
So do we want to just, uh.
I think you can reference it in the top paragraph.
Okay.
Oh, we found it.
What did we find?
Um, Mr. Emmertine sent me the petition.
Okay. So where do you think we should reference it in the text, or?
Um, I'm mentally parsing out the cross道parts.
Go back up to the top. There you go, yeah.
Students absent in the school is not be notified, the school shall attempt. S- um, maybe just start in the paragraph, and say, see flow chart at end of document for uh number of days and consequences. Yeah, that's ugly. Or reference flow chart at end of document.
See flow chart, you.
That works, I think that works.
Okay. I mean, would that work there? Okay.
Yeah. Actually, maybe put it before the no credit will be granted, 'cause students missing more than nine days per semester. So it's less associated with grades nine through twelve. So if there's no credit, you're gonna grant to students missing more than nine days, and then the next per, the next sentence is students in secondary schools.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, I apologize, I'm totally lost, where?
So the.
Right there.
The sentence that starts with no only applies to secondary schools, and so does the sentence after it, so if you're sandwiching it between those two sentences, it makes it look like it only applies to secondary schools. So yeah, you can, yeah, put there.
Got it.
Uh, see flow chart at end of policy, maybe for consequences of missing classes.
He wants to make it for sure, read that flow chart, right?
Yes, exactly. Absentee, so yeah, that's better.
Yeah, for, um, subsec, I can't remember how to spell absentee, it's.
E.
W.
ISM.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm trying to move around, I'm gonna fail this.
What?
It's all gonna change.
I do have a petition, but it's all PDF, and so it has a bunch of student information in it, so I can't, um.
Sure.
And it looks like it was probably from the administrative guidelines, Ramona.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it, you can tell, like, it's all, uh, it's somebody, they don't have, so I mean, we might have to craft that, but I'm gonna. They do have a separate letter that goes with the um petition, and I'm just changing taking off student information really fast, and then I can.
Okay.
Show everything.
Perfect.
Um, I'm just gonna call up the ten day letter, or petition letter, I guess. I'm just gonna add the letter really fast into our Google, our green form. So I've just added it, and then I'm gonna move it over, so it's uh in our thirty fifty file. And then at the next meeting, um, Rosanna, I'll work on trying to get an uh electronic version that we can edit, or I'll just recreate it.
I have a doggy on my computer, my.
It's, I mean, it's not, it's like, you can tell it's been, uh, it's a scanned copy, so.
Oh, okay.
It's not a digital.
I made a minor correction to the letter.
Which one?
Uh, the sixth day absent letter.
Okay, I put on our green doc the petition letter, and then I just added it in our um thirty fifty folder, so everybody's gonna look at it. Okay, so I think we have the letter, and then I just need the petition.
Why do they call it a petition if it's really an appeal process?
Yeah, this is all scanned.
Okay.
The petition is scanned, so.
Okay.
I'll either have to recreate it if we can't find it.
I'm not really sure what this letter's about.
The petition, or the.
The Timberlake High School letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But it is referencing ninety percent attendance, um.
And all the example, it's really the, you know, the committee met, and it's what they decided, so credits have been granted, or you were placed on probation, it was denied, it kind of gives a reason of um why it was in question.
Well, maybe I'm reading something wrong, 'cause I don't see that.
You don't see what part?
Credits denied, I mean, not credits denied, the committee met.
Right here, it says the attendance committee has met, and below are the results of your student's petition.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, right there in front of my face, um, there is no attendance committee, though.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, not officially, but there, it's whoever has met with the parent, and is trying to brainstorm that, and they're coming together, so it would be the admin team. But typically, you'd bring in the parent, and say, here are some of your concerns, or here are our concerns.
But the letter states, a student may have to petition for credits if they miss more than nine days. This is an assumption that not more than nine days have missed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's where.
Right.
I guess I'm a little confused by the letter. I mean, like, which letter is this, I guess is where I'm going with this.
Yeah, can you go back to the letter, Rosanna?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it feels like it's kind of giving you a, you may be getting this.
Yeah.
And then, well, now we've met, so it's dual, I see what you're saying. We probably just have to craft our own.
Well, and only documented extraordinary circumstances will be considered as valid reasons. Okay, what?
Right. Remember, we took that off of the other stuff before.
Right.
We didn't like that word.
No, we took off excessive, we are now into extraordinary.
No, before we took off extraordinary.
Did we? Okay.
And like draft one, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I mean, I like the part where it says, you know, whatever the committee, but that these are the credits that have been granted, this is, like, I like that part.
Yes, yes.
That, to me, makes sense, it's a follow-up specific to the outcome of the petition.
It does. Right.
It gives the information of a court, you can um appeal to the board, or appeal to pa- parents have the ability to appeal.
Do we state in our policy that, once they get a letter, they have ten days to appeal the decision to us? Do, is that in the policy?
No, I just think it said that the principal has ten days, um.
A petition shall be filed with the principal within ten days, school days, of the notice of loss of credit. The principal shall notify the parent and the student of the time for a review hearing, which shall be held within ten school days after receipt of the petition. So parents have ten days to get the petition.
And we have ten days to.
Oh, no, um. Yeah, so the parents have to file the petition with the principal ten days, af- within ten days after getting the notice that the credit is potentially lost.
Okay, so here's another thing, is that ten calendar days, school days?
It says school days, it says ten school days.
Oh, that's a school days, okay.
But not on the petition, this, this just says ten days?
On the letter, yeah.
It just says ten days. Yep.
I mean, if we're calling it a petition, then it should be something a little bit more than an email?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there needs to be an understanding as to why the absences occurred.
Right. Well, I would assume that there's a, we're, I mean, it, we're reaching out, calling, bringing them in. Like, I know Matt used to meet with parents all the time about this, like, it was, it was a face-to-face. There would be initial, can we please meet, and then, you know, that he really even tried to go beyond just a phone call. It was definitely a face-to-face, as much as he could get parents to come in.
Right.
So.
So it looks like we just need to sort of take this, but then add in our own.
Maybe play around with it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a form letter kind of thing.
And then I can draft the petition that they have.
Yep.
And then kind of either merge that all together, that, so it's a packet kind of thing?
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because we want to give them the tools to be able to not.
So I'll, if I can't find a um electronic, I'll uh redo this.
Okay.
And then Rosanna will work on thirty forty.
Okay.
Okay.
What is she doing on thirty forty?
Remember, we're gonna.
Oh, the forms, just the forms.
We're gonna pull from ISBA and CDA.
Okay.
Well, don't you want to look at the actual policy, since it hasn't been read since?
I do, but I, I, I thought maybe you meant she was just gonna fix the policy.
No, 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 no.
That's why I was like, what is she doing, wait a minute?
No, we'll pull it, well, we'll, I mean, we'll try, trying to merge and do what our, we normally do with a new draft, yeah.
Do your thing, okay.
Yeah. No yawnin', no yawnin'.
Sorry.
Okay. Do we want to tackle something else, or be done?
What is the something else, we have six minutes?
Uh, well, we're not gonna finish anything in six minutes.
I do want to bring up the um, we could look at it in six days, the.
Six minutes.
Whatever. You know what I meant.
The dog policy?
I would love to do the dog policy.
It's on there.
Uh, no, I asked for it to be brought to policy committees.
It's trained school dog policy.
No, that's not it, it's the truance, it's the.
Expulsion here, you got it?
Expulsion letter.
Okay, I printed that, too, 'cause I wasn't sure what all we were gonna get through.
Okay.
Where is that expulsion?
Can you uh multitask with me, and I can ask you some clarifying questions?
I can try.
Okay. Um, remember, we talked about this a while ago, but she's reached out to me a couple of times, and I didn't feel like I had like, a definitive, the girl that wanted to bring her, the service dog, she does, she trains service dogs, she wants to do it during her student teaching.
Mm-hmm.
Are we allowing that? We don't have a policy on it, and that's what I told her, but she is hoping that next year she can, so she's trying to secure her spot. But she would be doing her student teaching along with her side businesses, her.
Sorry, you lost me. So, we don't have the policy, this person wants to secure her spot with our district?
Her student teaching.
Her student teaching.
Yeah, she wants to be able to get placed with her. Yeah, she wants to be able to get placed with her um college.
Okay.
And so we have to decide if we are gonna allow her to.
So her placement is contingent on bringing the dog with her?
It sounds like it, she wants to be able to do it, yeah.
Okay.
I remember we were kind of concerned, 'cause it's like you're new, learning a new craft on top of then trying to train, like.
Right, well, for something of that magnitude of a decision, that needs to be a board question.
Okay, so can I um have just put this on the agenda to talk about that if we put uh at the board, the agenda planning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
I just wanna be able to answer her and give her time.
No, and I absolutely respect that.
And I feel like we talked about it, but I'm not definitively, and it just got put on the back burner, so that's my fault, I don't.
Right.
So. And then just on here, so Rosanna, you have context, yesterday, um, during our kind of donuts and cookie conversation, uh, there was a parent that brought up possibly doing like a resolution and a policy around just some content that we don't necessarily want. So, that's, I have that at the bottom, it just says res- resolution policy regarding SOG, so we can bring it up at some point. But just all the, some of the health standards that we're trying to stay clear from, instead of it just, we wanted just a, her suggestion was put it in a policy, so I added it in there.
Um, with respect to this letter, what my frustration is, is um on the very first paragraph, um it said, it says, a determination was made to refer the above-named student. I would like to edit this. Imagine that, um. I don't know who the owner is. I think it's probably Brooke. But, the, a d- a determination was made to refer the above-named student to the Board of Trustees for an expulsion hearing for the following violation. What I don't want to have happen is, in that listing of the violation, is what the board can expel for. So, each, a habitual truant, you know, then it would be truancy. Incorrigible, is incorrigible or whose conduct in the judgment of the board is such, the thing is, is the board hasn't made a judgment yet, so you can't use that as a violation.
Right.
Um, and it bothers me when stuff goes out and it's like the board has already made a decision.
Right.
But the board's not been given any information and we're telling parents, you know, you could be expelled for that. So, this needs to be, um, there needs to be a clarification and an understanding that the violation is that of which the principal is sending to the board for, not the reason why the board can expel them, does that make sense?
Right, here's the reasons, you may have violated one of these reasons.
Correct, yeah.
Feels a little bit like the cart before the horse.
Right, exactly.
Instead of saying, you're going because you violated blah blah blah, and we'll see what the board says.
Well, and I mean, if a student is on a behavior contract, a simple, the violation is because you violated your behavior contract, or your reentry contract, or whatever we're calling it, I hate contracts, but, you know.
Right.
The rules.
That agreement.
Yes, so, I want to make sure, whatever's on this letter, we need to ensure that we're not putting there why the board can expel them, because that's not what it's about.
Right.
They're coming before us because they've violated some school rules, some, they're not here, whatever.
Right.
Um, because, yeah, I think it's, it's, it reads very poorly when it's, you know.
Only these reasons.
Yeah. Exactly. So, this needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I agree, 'cause I think actually, um. Yeah, I agree. I was just gonna say, I don't even think that. We haven't had any expulsion hearings. Have we?
We have one coming up.
Yeah, we've had, uh, right. Yeah, we have had, um, I'm thinking of in that list, you know.
Oh, correct, no, not in that list, yes. Unfortunately, what got put out for this one that is coming before us is a reason that the board can expel, and it's like, no, 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 that's, that's not a violation, that's, you know. So, we need to get this letter under hand so that there's, anybody that looks at it can understand that all you're putting there is the violation that occurred, yeah, not.
Right, take all that out, who owns it?
I don't know.
Well, I think I do, or I have rights to it.
Lisa owns it.
Okay.
Can I add somebody or, no, right?
You might be able to.
I can share it.
But Lisa's still the owner.
But if I share it.
Oh, yeah, there you go, yep.
I can do it.
Yep.
Do you wanna change it now, just, yeah?
So are you saying one of these letters already went out?
Yes, I am.
That's why.
Okay.
Yes, um, I was told I have to put in the reason, and so I put two reasons for this one that's upcoming.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay.
Which, I mean.
Yeah, that's another conversation in itself.
That is, yes.
I don't, didn't know the, like, the board was privy to how kids are being expelled.
I didn't. I didn't know that either, so, um, because the expulsion hearing procedures does not state who fills this out, it says I send it out, but it doesn't say who fills it out.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we probably, it doesn't happen often enough, that we probably just need to go through that protocol one more time and make sure we're dialed in. It's me.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I'm like, my phone is not blinking, I know it's not mine, but it sounds like it. Do we, do we need to tell them why? Given the fact that they have already met with the parents and the parents know what's going on? And we just don't randomly or arbitrarily be like.
This has already been communicated.
No, I believe the code does say you have to uh advise them of the reason for the vi- for um the expulsion.
Did you bring a book?
I did bring a book.
I love the book.
Do you have one?
I don't.
Do you want one?
Um, no, Ramona bought hers.
Yeah, I bought my own.
But we don't, I mean, like, I think I have one and Lisa has one, we don't both need one in our own list.
Yeah, that way I can scribble in it instead of always bouncing back and trying to remember where I saw something, um.
You have, what year do you have?
Yeah, it says, uh, I, I just got it.
Oh, yeah, see, I know I don't have the twenty-two.
Um, so, yeah, so thirty-three, two oh five, three says, uh, we have to state the grounds, the notice, shall state the grounds for the proposed expulsion or denial of enrollment at the time and place where such parent or guardian may appear.
Okay.
To contest the action of blah 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 blah. So we do need to, they do need to, um.
Could you put for the following behavior instead of the following violation?
Actually, it should just be reason.
Reason, yeah.
Where did you find it?
Uh, thirty-three, two oh five.
No, 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 the book, oh, LexisNexis, uh, let's see, who did I order that from?
And Michelle, just so you know, this is the actual verbiage from that code.
If I can find the.
I noticed.
Free, I can find the online.
Yeah, um.
Oh, I just found it.
Did you find it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, if we want to cite the entire code, I don't care about, I mean, we're, we're good to keep the code language.
Okay.
But if we're gonna differentiate and break it apart like this, then we need to, we need to put it in language that in my opinion is reasonable to understand from parents. So, I think the fact that the Board of Trustees may deny attendance, we don't need to, whose conduct and judgment of the board is such as to be con- yeah, I mean, just whose conduct is considered continuously disruptive of school discipline, um, or the instructional effectiveness of the school. Which, the reality is, those two reasons are being brought to us by the principal, because the principal has already made that determination. So, and, and this is may, it's. Anywho, I just, yeah.
Do you want Lisa to come back and relook at this?
Yes. I mean, she needs to weigh in on this as well, I don't want her to think. But the ultimate thing is, is the board needs to be fully aware of what's on this letter and approve what's going out to the parents.
Yep.
So, I do wanna make those changes, um, I do know that there was, um, on one of the things that went out, the deal is, um, the language in the code, I think, is actually incorrect. But, um, the I think when we send it out to the parents, we can actually correct the language because we don't need to cite the code. Um, so that is another thing that I would like to go before the, the board.
Okay, so we'll add, this letter is already on our green doc, but we'll add it, hopefully we can take it in, we'll have Lisa weigh in and then we'll
Yeah.
hopefully take it to the um October board meeting.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Does that get you off of the board meeting?
Yeah, it doesn't need to, there's no.
We just had, yeah, it's starting to sound now.
We, yeah, I pre, but we don't have too many expulsion hearings.
Yeah.
If we do, we're not doing our job right. So, yeah.
Are we good?
I'm good.
You want to stop recording?
Yeah, we can stop recording.